It is 6:01 PM. We do have all members of council present and I do call us to order. Mr. Moss.
The Trophy Club Municipal Utility District Number One Board of Directors are, is now in session. The time is 6:01. All the directors are present. I would like to request that the mayor be chairman this evening.
Alright, thank you President Moss. We, we have fifty minutes. We'll try to end at about ten minutes till if we can so that we can rearrange everything. We do have a lot of items to discuss, so let's move forward and try to stay on topic as much as we can. Item number one, consider and take appropriate action regarding a ground lease agreement with the Town of Trophy Club, Municipal Utility District Number One for use of the annex building located at 100 Municipal Drive. We had a subcommittee of two members of council and two members of MUD Board who worked on this. And I saw some activity going back and forth about the agreement. And it seems like there's still a few items left to agree upon. Is that correct everybody? Steven and Jennifer, is that correct based on y'all's knowledge? Or not?
I think it's an opportunity for the town council and the MUD Board to discuss any type of issues that may be outstanding and hopefully come to some type of resolution on those items and move forward with a document for approval.
Do you have a list of those?
We do not have a list, but I'm getting ready to get that talked about based on the members of the subcommittee. So I'm, plan was to go to the subcommittees from the council and MUD and say, what were your issues? Let's get those on the table so we can deal with those. So Garrett, I saw you raise your hand if you want to speak.
If I can, so it was Kevin and Neil, myself and Tim that were assigned to that subcommittee. And I think, one thing that was accomplished is I think we have a, a solid boilerplate lease, if you will. So I think the form of the lease that we've all looked at and agreed to is, is something that I think both bodies can, can be comfortable with. I, I think that. I think what it came down to was, there was some, there were some issues of use. There was some issues when I went back, some issues in terms of the amount of time that we were leasing the building for. Kevin and I talked on the phone and if, if everybody remembers correctly, it was about a twenty-eight, thirty-minute conversation we had. And there were some very long motions in that where one person would start with something and it would, it would kind of, is it twenty-five years, is it ten years, is it one-year options? Tim and, and Neil and Kevin and I discussed these things. I thought with use, what we did with the building, how long we had the building. And then there was probably a couple of other comments that some other people in the council would have. I thought that tonight, unless there's an objection to this, we, we sit down and we come up with an agreement tonight. Because I think the, the lease in itself is probably agreeable, but there's, there's some issues of what are we going to do with the building? What is the MUD, what is the MUD's direction or input that they can have as to what we do with the building? Parking, renovations and all these kinds of things. So I think tonight, and Kevin, you may want to chime in, I don't want to steal all the spotlight here, but I think that's, I think we need to go over four or five large issues and try to work them out tonight. I think we just start from scratch and, and see if we can get them worked out, but.
Kevin, do you want to speak?
At our initial meeting, I mean, we pretty much worked out what I thought was about eighty-five percent. And then obviously, you know, your council disagreed with some of them or had some issues with some. And the motion you're referring to was a council motion, it wasn't a joint motion. But as, as far as the use of the building, it was, it was brought to our attention initially that you could save the taxpayers, and correct me if I'm wrong, about a million dollars by utilizing those offices, that space as offices. And that's what the lease agreement went into it as, as office space. Now I hear different things, which I mean, probably isn't going to be a problem, but I'm just wondering, has the council had any plans or do they know what they want to use for the building for? Because usually when you lease a building, you have a use, you know, that you're going to use it for. You don't just go, I'm going to lease that building because it's there. So I, I guess I'm looking, if, if we're going to do a lease and you have something specific in mind, then, you know, let's work at that point.
So council, each of you should have a copy of the draft lease agreement for municipal building annex. Looks like this, has a blank for date, I assume MUD Board has a copy of the same. Do you have that kind of document in y'all's packet?
Yep.
Okay. As I go down it, the first place that I see something on the first page is a blank that says, blank parking spots. Was that something debated that has to be decided upon?
Well, the, the parking, right now it looks like, I mean, if you close on your land and start construction of a building, you're looking at, I would say, minimum, you know, a year and a half, two years, is that correct to say? Anyone?
Yep, I think that's a fair statement.
So as far as the parking allocation, I think we had in mind, okay, number one, when is the parking going to be allocated? Right now, obviously, nothing would change. You're still in the building for minimum a year and a half, two years, so parking is, you know, free for all, first come, first served. If you're going to make it a meeting room or something like that and there's expected high, you know, attendance in that building, then that could be a problem. Another thing that comes into play is if there's a water storage tank, we have a study going on right now, is to be placed on that site, obviously parking is restricted there. We still need parking for, you know, our staff and anyone that attends meetings or events.
Alright, Neil, I saw you raise your hand.
Well, simply the twenty-three sp- allocated spaces, eleven are the spaces directly abutting the building. Oops, sorry. Directly abutting the building and there's twelve spaces across the parking lot up against where the, one of the ground storage tanks are. Again, directly across. And the discussion was that once you're using this, nothing changes now, but once you occupy your new town hall, then there'd be at least twenty-three spaces allocated for the remaining staff that would stay in that building and use it for offices. And again, to reinforce what Kevin said, when we, when first the committee got together, we were under the premise that you were going to continue to use that, the annex as office space. And somewhere along the line, that has changed.
Okay, let's clarify that point. Council has taken no action to say exactly how big the building's going to be at the new location. The last action that we had, correct me if I'm wrong, was that we came up with a square footage of what was going to be planned when we were looking at the Methodist church land. And that included utilizing the entire roughly four thousand square foot of the annex building. So council hasn't taken any action on that, so anything you're getting is, is just discussion and maybe comments that people are making. So it looks like to me that the paragraph at the bottom of page one that names says twenty-three spaces. It says upon completion of the town hall. So the reality is, you're not addressing anything about parking spaces today. You're just saying, when you have a new town hall, twenty-three spaces, but then it goes on and says a diagram attached to this lease, Exhibit B, which includes blank, parking spots. So if we're signing this today, do we want to fill in the blank? Do we want to remove that item that's Exhibit B that in with us?
Nick, I think what, what that was intended for is so that it's, you, to make sure that y'all get parking right there in front, the north, exactly north of the annex. So in other words, we don't say, we get all the good ones across the front and y'all have to go out in the field. That was kind of the point of that. And I have since gone out there and counted them, I don't have my book, just to see how many were right there across the front. And I think it was eleven. But that number, it would be a diagram that actually shows that, was kind of the idea behind that.
Okay, I think that's a good point. So that makes sense for that deal. So Phillip, you had your hand up.
Well, what I was going to point out, if, if you went into this agreement with just thinking that we were going to use it for office space, I don't think that you would have put permitted use. So you know that we're looking at all different options, not just office space.
There's certain, when you lease property, I mean, the town has restrictions on uses of what you can build and what you can use in Trophy Club. It's the same thing, there's certain things that we prefer not to have, you know, because of neighbors and, you know, being neighbor friendly.
But I, I think we were always going to explore options, not just, not just office.
So what paragraph are you referring to that says permitted use?
Permitting use is second page.
I'm sorry?
Permitting use is on the second page.
On the second page, that's what I thought you were doing.
Let's, let's just cut to chase. The thing you're talking about is the senior citizen center, right?
No, no, I'm saying that we, we didn't, I don't think that we went in this just saying that we were going to save a million dollars and just you keep our, our staff there.
I, I disagree, I mean, well, but that, that's another.
Guys, look, we're never going to get through with these items if we don't deal with the, the points of this lease. Everything said outside of point of this lease is out of order, as far as I'm concerned. How about you, Mr. Moss?
Yes, sir.
So stay on the topic of the words of the lease and let's agree and move forward if you're going to get anything finished. Otherwise, we'll debate issues back and forth, please, thank you. Alright, Phillip, you have something about the lease?
No, that was about the lease, that was permitted use, that's why I was bringing up.
We're going to get to permitted uses in just a second, I believe. So let, point out that issue again about where is permitted uses?
Second page, middle of the page.
That has a par- that starts as a bold, office storage, community meeting room, but not including an animal control shelter. So that's currently in the lease. Council, are you agreeable to those words? Or you have any problem with those words?
Well, just some minor things. It says room. If we did do a community center, we could divide it into a couple different rooms. So do we want to put the word rooms in there? Do we have movable walls?
You sure could, or you could say meeting space and it doesn't have anything to do with one-room, five-rooms, right?
You might want to say meeting spaces and make it plural again, for the same reason, make it multiple instead of singular.
Alright. That could do it too, alright. So on, Ryland, do you have something on this topic?
About parking, so.
Oh, you want to go back to parking?
Right, so if you guys want to go around and around on this, go ahead. So for parking, so there's no accounting being done on the parking spaces right now, correct? Parking wasn't discussed at our previous meeting when we were all here and set this process forward. So going with the spirit of what the mayor just said, I don't see that there's going to be enough of a material change in the overall use of the parking spaces when we have fifty less people there now, or there in the future than we do today to bog down tonight's process. I'm, I think that the introduction of parking spaces altogether has introduced a debate point that's going to prevent us from accomplishing anything tonight. So my recommendation would be that we just leave it out of the agreement. I don't think it's material.
Alright, Jim Thomas, you raised your hand.
And Ryland, I have no objection to that. Please, please understand, in our meeting, what we did was, we said, it's not our job to think in terms of how you're going to use a building. It's our job to think in terms of what do we need? And so whether it be a senior citizen center, whether it be a community center, regardless, there will be activities during the daytime where people will want to come up and park. And maybe you might be absolutely right, with fifty less employees, it might work out. All we tried to do was identify the number of spaces that we would need to put a reserve for MUD employees and MUD visitors signs on. And I think the number was twenty-three.
And I think you'd be with, well within your privilege to do that, no matter what, because it's your parking lot.
Alright.
I just have a quick question. Steven, how many people are in this building, staff?
In terms of both buildings or this?
Yeah, the police are going to, I mean, that's where a storage tank possibly goes, so you can't include that.
The annex building.
The annex building has, let me count, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. I believe there's fifteen individuals who office in the annex.
Right, so that's where, where the fifty come from, that's.
We just have, how many people do we have that office that aren't in the field?
That aren't in the field, including PD.
Yeah. Whereas we're talking about parking, I mean, it's close to fifty, right?
You're probably in the.
High thirties maybe?
Yeah.
Now that I think about it.
Yeah, probably in that.
Sorry. Point, point stands.
Because, well, once you add personal vehicles in for like PD, that's where they park and then they have to, they then get into their police vehicle. And you're probably in the thirties range, I mean, I could come up with that number for you.
Are you counting like landscapers would park their car here and then take the?
No, sir, they, they go to a different facility in the morning when they come to work.
Alright, so for this particular agreement, does anybody object on either side that leaving twenty-three, coming up with an Exhibit B that talks about the front spaces along the annex building? I think is what Jennifer's referring to and Steven, and we move that item forward. Is that agreeable? Alright. Next item in the, in the list of things would be terms on page two. This document says ten years with an op- option to extend as provided in this lease. So any discussion about that, that particular item? Mr. Lamont?
Originally, we had twenty-five years and I appreciate the MUD directors taking out the ban on the senior center. But if it's limited to ten years, I think it's very difficult if we wanted to do a community center. If we signed it tonight, ten years, and it takes two years to build the town hall and then maybe another year to do renovations, that brings us down to seven years usage, where they could come back in and say, we want the building. And I don't think that's cost effective.
I'm sorry.
And that's, also the termination, well, alright, we're.
Let's just, let's deal with terms. Anybody want to comment about it so we can get these items?
Well, the, the terms and the termination, I think, come, roll together.
Alright with that.
I mean, it, the way I think Garrett and Tim and I.
Let me finish if they roll together, okay? So originally, it was three years notice, now you're down to one-year notice. And also, the discussion was that you would only require office space.
Twenty-three spaces.
If a governmental entity required it, whether it be TCEQ or EPA. Now you're saying for any business reason, for any reason. So if you decided you just wanted a bigger room, you could say, get out in, in ten years. And I think that, that prevents us from doing a lot of stuff with the, with the space.
Can, can I say something, Nick, just jumping in, just for, just to expedite things a little bit? Because Kevin and I went round and round on this. There was, there was multiple discussions about this during the meeting, we talked about this. And it can be interpreted different ways as to, was it ten years, was it twenty-five years, what was it? So I think tonight, just to expedite things, let's just wipe the, wipe it blank. What can you guys agree to in term, what can we agree to in term? And let's just, let's not go back and rehash what it was, we're here tonight, let's just find it, let's find a, an amount of time.
Where did the subcommittee end up?
Ten years.
We ended up with ten years.
We were at ten, except that we, yes, the, the, the year, they had to give us a year to vacate, but they could only have us vacate if, right, after the ten, but we could still only vacate if the state told them that they had to change the use.
That's not in here, though.
I realize that. I mean, that, that was my understanding, but.
So what are you proposing that we go back and?
I'm just, I'm, I'm proposing that you guys, how, how long do y'all want to? Let's just figure out what the time is tonight. I just don't want to go back and say, you said, you said, what did we say? How long are y'all willing to give us a solid guaranteed lease? We don't have to leave the building.
We've agreed to what's in here, alright.
Yeah, what we talked about.
So ten years.
Yeah, we had options of twenty-five with a three or five year. Right. And then I made a motion at the last ring that, no, let's just do a fixed. So for ten years, you know, it's there. And then we talked about in our meeting to extend it out.
Okay.
As far as the governmental requirement, I, for myself, I'm not going to, you know, hang a lease on something that a TCEQ or governmental entity has to come down and say, okay, we, we think you need more space for storage or records or whatever and have, have to have that. That, I, I don't think that's.
Okay, so let me, let me tell you what, what some of the thought process is and, and we.
Let me ask a question first, just for clarification. As I read terms and termination date, just correct me if I'm wrong. This is a ten-year lease and that the one-year notice says landlord shall give written notice to a tenant at least one year prior to the effective date of the termination. So meaning during the ten years, you can give one-year notice, anytime during the ten years? What does that mean? Because I think that's.
I think our intent, and correct me if I'm wrong, Garrett, is that at year nine, you'd have to give a notice, is that right, Garrett?
That's correct, yeah. Okay, that's the way I read this, but I could read it both ways and I just wanted to make sure that we all agree.
You read things a lot differently, upside with.
Okay, Garrett, go back.
I, I think, I think what Kevin is saying is, and correct me if I'm putting, it's ten years of lease term that you couldn't terminate. Here's, here's, here's where I think the council's coming from and I think this is where we're going to ask for a bit of leniency and maybe for more term. If we, we, we didn't know what we were going to do with that building, but it was the general intent that we were going to buy the Methodist land and we were going to try to utilize this building. Obviously, now we're going to try to, and we don't know if we're going to do this or not, put all the facilities in one building. We've been able to secure a piece of land that we can do that. Which leaves us with an asset that we could, that could become a great benefit to the community. Whether it's a senior center or a community center, it's an asset that we own that for a little bit of bailing wire and duct tape, if you will, for a little bit of money, a couple hundred thousand dollars, we could turn it into something that the community could use. Now, if that's the road we go down, the ten years is not going to be enough time for us to be able to pay back that loan we're going to have to take out. So I think that now becomes our concern. So are y'all willing to work with us on making this a, that Greg said twenty-five years or something like that? If we were to say this is going to be a community center and the city's going to reinvest a few hundred thousand dollars? And this is hypothetical, I'm not trying to, but if that's the way we're going to go, we need, we're going to need more time. And I think we should just discuss it now, whether or not the, whether or not MUD is willing to give us some more time so that we could reinvest in those facilities and make it a senior center or make it a community center or make it a storage facility or offices or something like that.
Correct me if I'm wrong, at, at our first meeting, pretty much only one, we talked about at year nine that you would have an option to renew it for X amount of period, I, I want to say three, is that right?
Correct. Well, we talked about one-year extensions that would basically run on for.
But at one time, you talked about five years.
Yeah, I thought it was like three or five or something like that.
We had the right to do it all the time.
But it wasn't just for five, I thought it just went on for.
It was.
Yeah, we were going to do two, five years and then we decided to just do it yearly that we could just, in perpetuity, to just, you know, it was unilateral.
So the way this reads at this point is, it's an initial ten years. You don't terminate until nine years, if you want to give notice at that point. And it automatically extends a year, or does some action have to be taken at the ten-year point?
At year nine, I think you would.
You have to issue termination if there's going to terminate.
Yeah. We, we talked about at year nine, you would advise us if you want to renew the, the lease, is that correct?
Is that in here anywhere?
I don't remember, I don't remember on the, the date, but the, the, the spirit of it, what Kevin is saying is correct. And, and, and I don't disagree with that Neil and Kevin. I think what we're saying is, as a body, we would like to ask, and the answer may be no, but we believe that there's things that we could do with that building. And is there a way we can work with you guys to give us the ability to turn that into something more than just office space if we can move into another facility? Is there an option to do that?
Personally, I don't have any problem, you know, if it's used for a community positive. The, the thing you'd have to look at is, I don't know, is it, if you have a termination, realistically, you have a ten-year fixed, that means no termination.
Right.
If you renew, if you put a three, five, whatever, you could still terminate within whatever termination clause is within that timeframe, unless it's another fixed.
Right.
So, you know, you could do five, three, it doesn't really matter, because if you can terminate, then, you know, it doesn't really matter.
Right, I guess, so maybe, maybe we look at it this way. What is the, what is the potential need that, that the MUD would have to have for that building in the future? And maybe we can resolve it by working backwards. Because we talked before about TCEQ or whatever, maybe requiring you guys to have more offices. And maybe it's that we don't give you back the entire facility, but if you need four or five more offices, we can give four or five more offices, but yet it can still be used. The part we improve could still be used for a community center or something like that. So it's not kind of an all or nothing. I guess what I'm saying is, let's, let's see where you guys need to be and let's resolve that and just, and go that way.
So Director Moss, I mean, President Moss, is it my understanding that this draft that's in front of us, the board took action on and approved this copy?
Did we not?
We didn't approve this exact copy, but.
Okay, not this exact.
Very similar.
Okay. I just needed to know if I needed to go back for agreement or things. So let's just simplify.
Mr. Lamont?
MUD Board, I'll be with you, one second. Is there any objection to the ten-year clause at the top under years? From the MUD Board?
No.
Nope.
Alright, council, what would you like that to be if you don't want it ten years?
I, I object to ten years and I would prefer twenty-five years.
I, I go along with twenty-five. If we're going to make changes and convert the building and invest taxpayer money, I, I'd need something more positive than just seven remaining years from the time you move into the new town hall. I think twenty-five would be more appropriate.
Anybody else on council?
I'll offer hopefully something that might help soothe the concerns here with Mr. Lamont and Mr. Perro. I understand them, where they're coming from and I agree in principle. However, I'm satisfied with moving forward with what both subcommittees have agreed to in ten years here and understanding that what Mr. Perro just said is the number one consideration that we as a council would have to take under if we wanted to do anything to that building that was a significant improvement or change. I'm satisfied right now without, with, to get this lease out of the way and done, to move forward as is. And then if we do come up with something, let's take that as a challenge and make it a, make, you know, a requirement of how we move forward. I don't think we have to boil the ocean tonight because we can't predict the future.
Anybody else want to comment about it?
Just want, are you suggesting that we do ten years and then at some point down the road, two or three years from now, renegotiate this lease?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr.?
Yes, Jim Perro and then Phillip.
I was trying to just get a clarification, Patricia could probably jump in and help us here. I know the intent of the termination date, escape clause, if you will, the landlord reserves the right to terminate this lease earlier than the stated termination date. If it's determined, it, it doesn't specify whether that right and that option exists one year into the lease, five year into the lease, eight years into the lease. I know the intent is at the end of nine years to give a year's notice, but that's not what it says. And Patricia, maybe you can clarify, if we were to agree to this, wouldn't the MUD retain the right? If they had a need, since we don't know what that need might be, three years from now, four years from now, to say, you've got one-year notice, vacate the building? Is that not what it says?
I think the language could be tighter. It's, it's a little loose, as the mayor said, you can read it either way. You have to look at the following sentence, it says landlord shall give written notice to tenant at least one year prior to the effective date of termination. If you're looking at termination date up here, then that's one year prior to September thirty of 2025. So that's the argument that it says one year at that ninth year.
But they can do it earlier, so.
Well, that would be an argument under, I think, the way it's written. I think it could be just a little tighter to ensure that that was the only time that they could do it, if that's the intent.
Alright, Phillip had his hand up and then Garrett.
I agree with Greg and Jim. I would like to see it for as long as possible. You know, if, if you go way back, back in the day, if, if the town had not built that building, there probably would not be anything there right now. It would just be grass. And I think that, you know, we, we want to use this for a greater purpose. And I, I, I don't think that, you know, we're all residents and the residents are still paying for it. When does the?
Two years.
Ten years left.
It's ten years left. Ten years, ten years, we'll still, we're still paying for it. And so I think that, you know, with so much money having been spent on it, I think that if we can utilize it for something for the community, I, I just don't see where that's not a win-win for, for all of us. And so just for myself, I would like to see it, you know, the term as long as possible. And I'd really like to see it used, you know, indefinitely for the community, just because so much money was spent. Was it smart of prior councils to do that? Probably not, but, but it happens. And so I think, you know, going forward, obviously, there might be a time when you, for, for whatever reason that none of us can imagine, might need it. But I think until that point comes, if we can use it for the community, for a community center or for, for meeting rooms or for whatever, which is needed, then I think that that's good for the board and I think that's good for the council.
Garrett, and then I'm going to speak.
My comment was just that, please know that attorneys have not reviewed this document. So there are a lot of, in Patricia's defense, there's a lot of little loose things if you read through here. Please, attorneys haven't seen it yet, I just wanted everybody to know that.
I'm not opposed to the ten-year, me personally. Would I like to see it longer, yes. I think as a compromise, I might propose that you either extend the ten-year slightly or you allow for a. or you allow for a longer notice. Uh, both of those work together. But I'm not opposed to just ten years. I don't want it to be vague about changing its use and the landlord reserves the right to terminate the lease earlier than the termination date when we're still paying on it for ten years. I, I think, I won't agree to that. So let's clean that up, if the board is agreeable to clean that up. And it looked like to me that at least two of us said they would agree to ten years. It looks like two said they really would prefer twenty-five, and a third said would prefer longer too. So, that's kind of where we are as a body. Neil?
When the committee was formed between the two council members and the two MUD members, I thought the intent was to look at what discussed at the joint meeting back on January twentieth, which I was hopefully attempted, that's what we did. And I wanted to bring something in here that we, the council and the Mud Board could look at, didn't even have to have the joint session. The idea was, let's bring it back to our own bodies and vote up or down. Now, this meeting started thirty-two, thirty-three minutes ago. We're still dancing around. Now, if the intent was not to have something that you could bring back in and vote up and down, like a subcommittee brings back and says, this is what we have agreed on, and then be going back and forth. What is here now echo is what was represented at the joint meeting. Now, if you wanna vote up, fine. You wanna vote it down, fine. But are we gonna spend another twenty-five, thirty-five minutes and this be going around in what the computer language used to call a do-loop? Now, who's at risk here? The town is at risk, because they built the building on land they didn't own. If you wanna continue to be at risk, fine. Now, if you want the committee to meet again, I'll do it one more time. If the town attorney hasn't had a chance to review the document, that's not my fault. If you want the language tightened up, good. I think Tim and Garrett will agree. I made a bunch of calls to these guys, saying, do you wanna meet again? Is there something else we have to look at? Let's, you know, I was, wanted to, before we came here, I wanted this tightened up as much as possible to minimize discussion tonight. So we could come back with recommendation as a group and say, this is what we recommend. And this is what I thought we were doing.
Appreciate that, Neil.
But, if you're, if you, if this is gonna keep going on, let's throw it back to the committee, let's hear your recommendations, let's do it one more time. But I'm, I'm gonna emphasize, one more time. Because that's all the time I'm gonna expend on-
All right. So, Jim, you wanna see what your people maybe feel about some of those comments?
I'd say ten.
I'm in favor of a little longer.
Me too. Jim, I, listen, Philip, I, I totally concur with what you said. Yeah, in, in our meeting, what I, I, I'm the one that, that asked for Jennifer to put on her thinking cap and come back and tell us what she thinks we might need twenty years down the road, Garrett. Because the only thing that I was hampered by was if we throw a long-term lease over there and it's, let me just say it comes out as a senior citizen center, and ten years from now, all of a sudden, we have to have five more offices, well, we'd like to have the ability to get those five more offices. You know, and that's outside of, outside of our long-term needs, a hundred years. I mean, you know, it's a community building, let's use it for the community.
And I'm gonna add, you know, if you go down to section G, general provisions, we have in there regarding alterations.
Which section was general provisions?
D, general provisions, landlord tenant agree on the following alterations. If you're going to change something in the building, you still would need to come back and discuss it with the landlord, i.e. the MUD. And if you start talking about three hundred, four hundred thousand dollars for a different type of use, that's what's gonna happen. As we've discussed ourselves, we know the way that building was built. You're, you're gonna have to put up trust, you're gonna, because the way the low-bearing walls are in that building, they didn't exactly build it for a future design. They built it basically to what it's spec for right now. And if you start talking about changes, you just can't simply knock out a wall, because you might be threatening the structural integrity of the building.
Okay, I, I look at that as, you know, leaseholder improvements, they surely need to be approved by the landlord. Uh, and all of that would be dealt with in an engineering fashion. That's not the purpose to deal with the detail here. So, Mud Board was going through a process of trying to say, what would they agree to?
That's actually, Nick, that's-
Let him, let him finish.
Okay. Jim, do you have a, I'm recommending fifteen years. I don't see any reason not to, uh-
I, I could support that.
We have no use for the building.
If you may have to spend money, I don't have a problem with that at all. Because I look at it as a long-term thing for the community.
Right.
All I care about is if we ever have a future need, we have a way to work with you to-
That's later in the agreement.
You agree to fifteen years.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
We got, at least three of us agreed to that, so.
Anybody else you wanna see? Neil?
If it's two hundred thousand, undo it again?
Y'all wanna comment on the fifteen years?
I'm looking at the time here and-
Just comment upon the fifteen, you either like it or don't like it.
I'll, I'll, I'd rather stay with ten.
All right, Neil?
Same.
All right. So, uh, Mr. Moss, what I've heard is you're kind of a three-two split on the fifteen years. Counsel, uh, would you go for fifteen years? Anybody object to fifteen years?
I'll stay with my twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
All right. So we have a majority that would go to fifteen years. And if we'll make that edit change for something to come back to us, uh, for approval of both boards, we'll deal with that. Of course, that would change the termination date.
Yes.
Is everybody, anybody have any problem with the one-year notice from termination date issue? Anybody? No, okay. So the issue becomes, I prefer to somehow get that first paragraph, first sentence of that termination clause tightened down and, and be more specific. So, I'll leave that up to somebody legally to, to deal with that.
I don't have, I'm sorry.
Greg?
I don't have a problem with the one-year. What I do have a problem with is own business purposes as an excuse to, uh, have us vacate the building.
The, the last phrase, own business purposes?
A governmental entity requiring them to need additional space. We, we talk about the initial, uh, joint meeting we had, and that's what we talked about then. It was not, not that they just wanna, maybe a bigger meeting room themselves. It was a governmental entity coming in and saying that they would require additional space.
Okay. Counsel, any of you have a problem with own business purposes?
I have the same concern that Mayor Protem Lamont has. I think, uh, in the spirit of what we discussed in January, it was said, what if TQ, uh, TCEQ or some other agency requires us to have more space for whatever, uh, then we'd need to be able to terminate the lease. And it was not that the MUD itself would be the determining factor, but an outside agency would force them to take that action, and now that's not what this says.
Whatever we discussed in the last meeting, we discussed in the last meeting, this is the way the document came to us tonight. So the question is, I, I see two people that have an objection to the own business purposes. Anybody else?
Yes, I, that's what we agreed to in the subcommittee.
Own business purposes?
No. Is exactly what Mr. Lamont's talking about. Somehow, they might have missed it, but we specifically stated inside the ten years, the only way they could terminate is if the state comes in or some governing body and basically mandates it.
By the way, they haven't done that for thirty-five years.
Yeah, we didn't expect it to be, but we, but we didn't want, we didn't want the MUD or anybody to just come in and say, well, you know, we want you out for any reason. Is basically what this states.
So what you're stating, Tim, is what's in front of us was not what you and Garrett agreed to?
Uh, yes.
So I guess that shoots the theory of being able to rubber stamp this, based on the subcommittee's work.
All right, so what I'm hearing is, and Neil suggested this, subcommittee get back together, or the board, y'all decide what you would agree to. What I'm hearing here is a majority of counsel would prefer to go back to the words, uh, not just other business purposes, but be more specific about that. So, uh, next item is base rent. Anybody object to the dollar per year?
That's a dollar fifty.
Inflation.
So I have one objection from the Bud Board that wants it a dollar fifty. Anybody else? All right. Counsel, any objection? All right, the dollar per year is decided upon. Any objection to permitted uses being changed to rooms plural, as opposed to room?
Or spaces, correct?
Or spaces, either way. We okay with that change? Okay. I don't have any more changes until, anybody else have a change on other pages they wanna point out? All right, what about, uh, E for tenant use of premises and-
I'm sorry, you were going down, I think it's in that area.
Any area.
Okay, I've got a question. Altering the premises, B to E?
B to E, uh, which is gonna be on page four.
It says tenant agrees not to, okay? So if we sign this agreement tonight, and we stay there, and then two years from now, we wanna build a community center, according to this, we gotta go back to them for approval.
Right, is correct.
And, 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 and we did, at least, I sent this out an email, and Kevin and I talked about this, this was through an email. The subcommittee did not agree to interior, at least on our side, we did not agree to interior changes having to be approved by the Mud Board. Interior of the building, what's that?
Is that in here? I don't, I didn't see that.
No, I think it is in there. So it's, it's the concern that Mr. Perro has. The, the only thing that I would be willing to agree to is if we made an exterior change to the building, which required some sort of, uh, change in parking or handicap ramps or something like that, that would alter their facilities as well. But that was part, that was part of my negotiations that I came back, and I'm really not sure where we were with that.
Is there a paragraph in there that says at the conclusion of the fifteen years that, uh, you have to put the building back in its original condition? Is there anything in there that says that?
Yes, in paragraph D one, it specifies that the landlord may require the tenant, at the end of the term of the tenant's expense, remove and physical additions and improvements, repair alterations, and restore the premises to the condition existing at the commencement date, normal wear and tear expected. So if we were to invest two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars, whatever that cost might possibly be, what this says is, if you wanted it back as it is today, you could require that we undo all that and restore it back to its original condition. And that would be troublesome to me to take the commitment to spend the money, knowing that you had the control to have us take it all apart.
Okay, but the issue of us approving alterations during the course of the fifteen-year basic lease is really not an issue. The issue is what happens at the end of fifteen years. That, I don't know why the MUD would wanna interfere in the first fifteen years. If you wanna turn it into something else, now that we could argue about what happens at the end of fifteen years, but I don't think there's any argument in the interim of the fifteen years.
All right, to me, I do see a problem with, with the phrase that says return it to original condition. To me, it seems like if you could add something in that D one, unless otherwise agreed upon in writing, so if, if there were proposed changes and you agreed upon those changes, that you surely aren't expecting to return it to the original position. I think that's a point. I lease space and have for over twenty years in my business. Every time I make any kind of significant change, the landlord wants to know about that change and approve it. And make sure that permits are pulled appropriately, inspections are done appropriately. So I personally don't have a problem with going back to my landlord and saying, here's my proposed changes, but I don't expect the landlord to come back and say, I don't like what you're gonna do with it. That approval is really, does it meet fire code? Does it still meet safety standards? I don't think you should be able to say, I don't like the fact that you're gonna put three restrooms, not four, or whatever that might be. And, and I don't think that's the intent here. But, but, but it doesn't bother me that says I'm gonna go back to the landlord and say, here's our proposed changes, we expect you to review them, and if you have an objection, to object to them.
But I, I agree with what you just said, is that if we approve your changes, then we shouldn't expect you to remove those changes after we approve them.
All right, so D one needs to deal with that issue, attorneys and staff. Somehow, you need to deal with the issue of not returning it to original if an approval was given for a modification. That just is too vague. So, we heard from our subcommittee that members that said, um, uh, did not agree to prior permission to make interior changes, only exterior changes. So, B to E says tenant agrees to, um, not to alter the premises. So that still is an issue. Is it agreeable to say alter the premises without prior approval, or, what are you looking for there?
Mr. Jim.
Yes, Greg.
The MUD had a full meeting, they had an agenda item for this, they went into executive session for this, and we're under the gun to approve this tonight. And I, I think this is, uh, this is a bad move on our part to do this. I think we should have this agended on our full meeting and, and discuss this, rather than try and, what, you got another ten minutes to get this done?
Well, it's gotta go to an attorney anyway before we can-
All right, so Garrett had his hand up, and Ryland has his hands up. I'll take your comments.
I, I was just gonna say that, I mean, I, I actually agree with Greg. He's, he's correct. I was just gonna say there's, uh, I was gonna add some language with the alteration part, but if you're gonna follow Greg's advice, then there's. Then I have a problem with janitorial services, that I don't think we should share janitorial services. We should be able to have our own services.
All right. So it, it sounds like to me that there are points that have been made tonight and still points to be worked out. We don't have long before we're gonna run out of time in this meeting. Uh, but we've had some discussion about it. Uh, there's, I think there was value in us being able to have that discussion. We have at least agreed in principle to fifteen years and a few other changes. Let's try to get a new draft done, and is the subcommittee from the council willing to meet again?
Honestly, I would rather meet in an executive session and, and negotiate the points and make sure that we're on the same page before we go back, or we're gonna wind up in the same-
But you're willing to do it after that?
Sure, sure. Yeah, at one, once we understand what the, everybody-
All right, Ryland, you had your hand up, and then Tim, real quick, and then I'm gonna go to Mr. Moss to see if they're willing to continue.
Yeah, I would just, I would just like to, at some point in the process, get a handle on what's in here that was added after the subcommittee stopped meeting. To do that is not negotiating in good faith, based on where we started with this process.
All right. Jim, any comments you wanna make or your board?
No, I don't think so. I think we're certainly willing to meet at another time. Neil?
Definitely.
Okay.
All right, so just real quickly, uh, to deal with a couple of items, um, item three, just recently, Philip discovered that there's this two thousand and eight interlocal agreement between the entities. Uh, Patricia, did we ever get from Pam or Jennifer where you had a memory that the MUD took action to deal with agreements that had all entities' name, that somehow clarified that?
Yeah, I have not heard back. I know that staff was working on that yesterday to attempt to find out if, if there were some documents, and they were looking for documents. The ones I reviewed that our staff came up with wasn't answering the question. I was trying to remember, back after that consolidation occurred, there were some actions taken, and I remember the discussions about the parties and contracts. I don't know if that was handled in the consolidation documents. I can't remember, I just remembered the discussion of the need to move forward with handling that matter, where you had Master District and MUD two as an entity. And I, uh, we were researching yesterday, trying to find documents to resolve that and had not been able to yet.
All right, so the attorneys are talking, the managers are talking, uh, that document's out there to try to help us. It did at least clarify unincorporated areas as an ILA. So if you were looking at, do you have an ILA? I don't know whether that's legal standing or not, but, but there seemed to be that. And as far as item five, um-
Can I, Mr.?
Yes. Neil?
Kevin, you wanna go first?
You go first.
Neil? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought Kevin was gonna shoot. Oh, regarding, and this has come up as part of our discussion at FECC, um, and-
I'm sorry, Neil, what is the-
This is the EMS consolidation committee. Uh, Fire EMS consolidation committee. Those areas that are unincorporate, that are not in, uh, in the MUD, but they are within the town. You're putting it at risk on mutual aid, on mutual aid agreements. If we're, if we're going in on unincorporate, uh, fire protection, if we're extending fire protection to an unincorporated area inside the county, we're covered. We go to another, another town, we're covered. But if you, if, if we go to an, uh, one of these uncovered areas within the town, and we, we, safety first, guys, we're gonna go out-
Okay, I'm gonna stop you, Neil. I, I hear what you're saying. All I was really pointing out is there is an agreement, read the agreement, you probably- didn't get it much before we got it, if not. It does reference providing services on unincorporated area. We'll deal with that another time. I was really summarizing where we're going, not debating that issue, and I understand your points about that issue, so.
All right, real quick, Mayor, can I say?
Real quick.
Um, B to references assessments. I don't think any assessment, and that's the whole purpose, is everyone in this town pays fire taxes except for these properties, and assessment per this has not been assessed that I know of.
Okay. All right, very good. Uh, so item five, uh, counsel, you had in your, uh, information, a, uh, a draft agreement, is that right, Stephen, that listed six properties or five items, I guess, that seemed to be clearly, uh, dealt with, uh, that we'll put that on council agenda to deal with that appropriately, just to let you know. And I know that, that Stephen and Jennifer met to try to work out some of the other issues that are a little bit more complicated to, to deal with that. To me, this is an item that staff needs to work out adequately and let's not get political about, uh, the deeding over the infrastructure. So we'll, council will discuss that and make that appropriately. All right, so it doesn't look like we took action. I appreciate all the comments tonight.
Before you, uh, I just want to point out one thing. I noticed later on you're talking about your audit and your regular agenda. Uh, if, if the town is carrying these assets on their books.
That's a different issue. We're going to adj, we're gonna adjourn, uh, and we're gonna deal with that issue.
I'm just worrying about overstating assets as far as an audit.
We're gonna deal with that appropriately. We've talked to our auditors about that and that will be handled appropriately. All right.
Nick.